I will call to order the Wednesday, November 3rd, 2021, meeting of the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission with a roll call, please.
Daniel Henderson.
Here.
Michael Widmer.
Present.
Bill Halk.
Here.
Michael Drinkwater.
Here.
John Enlow. John Flansburgh.
Here.
Mickey Hazelwood. John Martini.
Here.
John Combs.
Here.
Dave Solero.
Here.
Mervyn Wright.
Here.
John Zimmerman. Harry Fonstock. Thomas Payette. Cindy Turcheck. Ron Penrose. We have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Two, Public Comments. I have one card here from Mr. Listner. Are you here?
Good afternoon. Is this working? I can't tell.
I think.
Okay, I can hear you.
I can hear you.
I'm Bob Listner with Lifestyle Homes. I think many of you know that we've been building homes in Reno for about 33 years now, about 3,600 homes. And what not very many people know is that we also have about 4,000 acres, we and partners, all of us live here in Reno, about 4,000 acres that are mostly entitled for about 12,000 homes in the Northern Valleys. These projects, there's about six of them, are collectively known, I've heard this more than once, as the zombie projects. We've owned the land for 20 years and nothing's happening. About two years ago, the zombies woke up and we've been working on these projects as fast as we can ever since. We have currently four groups of engineers working on tenant maps and final maps. I have notes. I'm almost done, but I have notes. We currently have underway or approved one special plan, four tentative maps, one planned unit development, four final maps. And basically, what I'm here to tell you is that the wastewater projections from Cold Springs are about one quarter of what we show. And I'm not surprised because zombie projects rarely show up. I don't blame the planners at all. We haven't done anything with our projects for 18 years and they're just not in the regional projections yet. They're coming. The Lemon Valley wastewater flows are at least, are less than half of what we project and we don't even know what really is going on in Lemon Valley except our own stuff. We will send over to you this week to staff our projections for our own units for those two valleys and we would hope that somehow that will get into your projections for what's going to happen in those valleys. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Jen, do we have any other comment for today?
No.
All right, seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Three, Approval of the Agenda. Can I have a motion, please?
Move to approve, Solero.
May I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Flansburgh. Motion by Member Solero, seconded by Mr. Flansburgh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. We'll move on to Item Four, Approval of the Minutes of the September 1st, 2021 Meeting.
In the minutes, it shows that I was present, but actually I was in St. Louis at a conference, so I would not have been here. So we just reflect the minutes to show that I was absent.
All right, any other comments? Can I have a motion, please?
Would you prefer the minutes with the question, Mr. Flansburgh, as part of our report?
Thank you, Mr. Drinkwater. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Solero. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. We'll move on to Item Number Five, Report Discussion and Possible Action on Comments on the Draft Update to Chapter Seven. Welcome, Kim.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Board, and I appreciate being here and this is my first meeting, so this is exciting for me and I'm on a learning curve, so I appreciate that. I just wanted to start off with a little bit of a background and then I'll hand the time over to Jim, that we're in the middle of this Regional Water Management Plan Update and this particular chapter Jim's been working very hard on to get it finalized for the group for review. So with that, I'll give Jim the floor so he can give you an update.
Hey, thanks, Kim. At your meeting last, last meeting, I guess in September, I asked for some time to develop a regional water balance that's consistent with Trucking Valley Regional Planning Agency's modeling and also with Trucking Valley's water authority projections that they need to pull water from. And to develop a model that's mutually agreeable among those parties and Western Regional Water Commission staff for inclusion in the draft chapter that's in the packet. And then I said I was going to report back to you today. So here I am, reporting. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge a big effort by Trucking Valley Regional Planning Agency, especially Director Jeremy Smith and G.I.S. and Danny Kirwin. They took the water balance model that was in a private consultant's hands prior to this Regional Water Plan Update, integrated into their G.I.S. system and kind of brought it up to speed as far as being a G.I.S. model. Also, I'd like to acknowledge John Enlow, who's not here today, and his staff, Dave Kershaw and Sean Star, who helped on the model and the entire chapter, actually. So I inserted the revised or updated water balance model, its data and conclusions into section 6.3 in the chapter of the packet. Now, I'll admit my mistake before anybody else does if I can. This is Chapter Seven. I didn't get to changing the numbers on the chapter that's in the packet, so it still says it's Chapter Six and all of a sudden had this and that sort of thing, so be careful as I move through that. But I'll be referring to them as their Chapter Six references. Any revisions to the preceding sections, you know, sections one, two, or three in a front matter, they relate really to the revised water balance. So the rest of the chapter is pretty much as you've seen it in its past papers. Unless you have any questions at this point, I'll talk through how we revise the water balance. Jen, I think we'll bring up the actual map on the screen. That'll be the only slide that I have to refer to, but it's also in the packet as 56 items are on, scored into the chapter. The water balance is based on the 2020 consensus forecast, done by Trucking Valley Regional Planning Agency over two years, next gen, for a 2040 population of 569,385 persons. It's also based on TMRPA's 2020 land use model and the model boundary is the Trucking Valley Service Area or TMSA. Projected water demands and water distribution to the sub area is shown on the map, functions of the land use model and do not necessarily reflect Tomlin planning. The total 2040 water demand projection generated by land use model is a very close match with Tomlin's projections that are shown in Table 6.1 earlier in the chapter. There's actually less than 1% difference between the total county estimate that we got from Trucking Valley Water Authority and TMRPA's water balance projection. Staff agree that coordination at the regional demand level would be adequate and that the water balance model itself should reflect the land use model output as a plausible scenario for either 2040. So in the infamous words of Professor George Botte, who is a modeling expert, he said, "All models are wrong, some are useful." So what we're hoping is that this is a useful model. Wastewater flow projections match those being used on, let's see, we cleaned up the map by removing the domestic well conversion and septic system conversion lines. Those kind of cluttered up the map in the past and really in the last five-plus years, I haven't seen any convergence happening, so it really just seemed like it was a side issue. So we pulled them off the map, but we left them on the table that follows the map just to leave preserving information. Wastewater flow projections match those being used to develop the effluent management guidance document that I've talked about through before and the methodology for that and figures are in Section 6.2.2. Now, those wastewater flow projections, effluent management projections are also provided by Trucking Valley Regional Planning Agency. They did the modeling that's been provided to the team working on the effluent guidance document, so we're using the same modeling results in the G.I.S. water balance. Finally, I didn't show any effluent management capacities or alternatives on the map or in the table following it. Instead, the leader has referred to Chapter Four, which is still under construction and it's under construction along with the effluent management planning guidance document that I referred to last meeting as well. And ask that we've developed the Chapter Four and that document at the same time so that they are as consistent as possible. So the table that follows the map in the chapter, Table 6-7 summarizes information shown on the map. I left some things out. I realize that I omitted future wastewater flow projections for Cold Springs and for Reno State, but those are on the map. Those should be 1,000 acre feet per year and 3,000 acre feet per year is exactly what we need. I also need to round the other wastewater projections. So there's some rambly things that I need to take care of, just some little things to do. Water supply and demand figures should, oh, yeah, should also be rounded up. The final sections in the chapter, 6.3.1 and 6.2, draw some general conclusions in the water balance on water supply, wastewater use, and then on effluent management. So I generalized some of the things about effluent management in that last section and I'll read through them because I think they're consistent with what we're developing as far as the guidance document, but they don't go so far as to try to say this is definitely happening there or what even might happen. So what I put is options to address the need for future effluent management capacity and this is region-wide. Convert sewage or asthma to facilities with excess treatment or reclaim water use capacity. Develop advanced treatment facilities for effluent produced water of sufficiently high quality for discharge to service water or to offer for recharge. Develop new reclaimed water systems or connect additional users to existing systems, particularly in double directly closed basins. Reclaim the water irrigation use helps to manage the amount of water discharge to swamp water, so that's 11 dollars each word. Especially when the water level in the lake is high, irrigation is a seasonal use, however, and storage or other options may be needed during a certain period. Supply reclaimed water for agricultural irrigation uses outside the Trucking Valley Service Area and then discharge to the rapid infiltration basins or creek drainages outside the Trucking Valley Service Area. So I think that covers generally all of the span of the options that are being considered under this packet. So getting down to the bottom of the staff report, staff are recommending that this commission accept this draft chapter for review as it's presented and acknowledging that it's a work in progress and it needs a little cleanup editing and then provide comments to staff by December 17th, 2021, by way of a secure web-based file sharing platform for which Kim will provide details soon. So with that, Mr. Jen, I'll turn it back to you for questions, comments.
Thank you, Mr. Smithman. Any questions for Jim today?
I do.
Mr. Flansburgh.
Jim, based on the comments from Bob Listner and the projections for potential build-out of housing, how would something like that, receiving information, how would that get incorporated into something, into this water balance? Or is this strictly just using those numbers from the regional planning agency?
That was our attempt, just use the model output from the regional planning agencies. What they do, and I'm sure this is probably a repeat for everybody, is they produce this consensus forecast for a population for the entire region and then they fit that into the TMSA using their suitability factors in their model. So if regional planning suitability model predicts that development is going to happen in the core, and I think that's kind of the way that they lean, then those wastewater flows are going to go to Kelmore and they're not going to go to Cold Springs. But anything could happen between now and 2040 as far as where the development pattern actually happens. But as far as that model that we wanted to present to you and have you adopt into the plan is purely output of their model. So if we wanted to, you know, we could put comments, we can include, as we've done in the past, we include comments from the public that you would like to include as far as response to the draft Regional Water Plan, we can incorporate it that way. Otherwise, we'd have to do multiple law lines, you know, what if all this development goes into the North Valleys, what if all this development goes into the South Valleys and a number of scenarios like that. But what I recommend right now is that we just run one scenario that's consistent with Trucking Valley Regional Planning Agency and their regional plan.
And just to follow up with that and just for everybody else as well, I mean, this is the model, this is the information we have based on these forecasts and where we believe people will go, but we redo this every few years and we relook at these models of where things are, you know, actually happening. So, you know, as you said, maybe hopefully this model so that it is useful.
Right. And that's a good point because as the consensus forecast is recast every two years, this model could be run every two years. That's the view we're having of integrating it to Regional Planning's work. And then they will take into account as maps are approved and subdivisions approved, that sort of thing, that shifts where the suitability shows that development is going to happen.
Thank you, Jim. Any other questions? All right, this Agenda Item is slated for possible action. Does anybody want to propose a motion today?
Widmer, so approve.
Motion by Mr. Widmer. Do I have a second?
One second.
Second by Mr. Flansburgh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Move on to Item Number Six, Report Discussion and Possible Action on Comments to the Draft Update to Chapter Six, Flood Management and Stormwater Drainage. Kim.
Thank you, Chairman Martini. Kim Rigdon for the record, Water Resources Program Manager. Under this Item Six, we're looking at Chapter Six. Chapter Seven was what Jim just went through, so I apologize if I misspoke last time. I was looking at the numbers. So in Chapter Six, this is the Flood Management and Stormwater Drainage Chapter. I've had an opportunity to review it. I also understand that at the last board meeting, the board had moved to approve it with an extension of some time for some comments on it. Staff has not received any more comments on this chapter, so I wanted to report that and bring it forward for your approval, for us to be able to put that into the package with the other chapters that have been approved, if there's not any comments or questions on that.
Thank you, Kim. All right, I'll bring it back to the Planning Commission. Any comments? All right, I'll look for a motion, please.
I'll move to accept.
Motion by Mr. Flansburgh. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Solero. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Move on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Status and Discussion Regarding Chapters and Schedule Related to the Drafting and Presentation of the 2021, gosh, I can't believe we're saying 2040, 2040 Regional Water Management Plan Update. Kim.
Thank you, Chairman Martini. Kim Rigdon again for the record, Water Resources Program Manager. I put this on the agenda because I felt like it was a good opportunity for me to just speak a little bit to the changing of the guard here with program manager, me being the new program manager, and some staffing changes. Jim and I are working really hard together. Jim has been a great mentor in helping me work through this and has, we've been trying to figure out how to keep this moving forward and meet the January goal of having a draft plan. That said, with the approval of the two chapters that you just approved, we have two left. We have Chapters Four and Ten left. Chapter Four is the Effluent Management Section and Chapter Ten is essentially the overview of what needs to be done in the future, the long table, the projects list of what needs to be done and get that assigned. My understanding is that I'll be working on that with Jim over the next month and Jim is going to be working to complete the Effluent Management Chapter, Chapter Four. So I wanted to just bring that forward so that you understood where we were at in the process. We will be delayed. I'm anticipating a delay in being able to approve the plan and bring a hearing forward to this group. We, I think what we're going to end up doing is having Chapter Four and Chapter Ten available for review in January, at the first January meeting. If the board, and we'll talk about future meetings and that in the next, in the appropriate Agenda Item. So I just wanted you to have that information, know we're working towards meeting that goal of having a draft available in January. We don't want to delay this any further and we're working forward on that. And if you have any questions on the schedule or how you'd like to see that move forward as far as meetings, we'll be looking for comment.
All right, thank you, Kim. Anybody have comments on this Agenda Item or questions for Kim? Okay, hearing none. This is slated for possible action. Does anyone want to make a motion?
We approve the proposed schedule for the draft.
Motion by Mr. Widmer. Can I have a second, please? Oh, I'm sorry, was that you, Bill? With the mask, it's hard to tell. I'm sorry, motion by Mr. Halk. Can I have a second, please? Thank you, Mike. Second by Mr. Widmer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Move on to Agenda Item Number Eight, Program Manager's Report. Kim.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Martini. Kim Rigdon for the record, Water Resources Program Manager. On this particular Agenda Item, I just wanted to let you know that I was not going to be presenting the financial reports and the status of projects. I did not include that. As an Agenda Item, I've been working with staff to reconcile some of the financials with the system that we have internally and I've come, there's been some snags in me being able to do that and I only want to report accurate information to you, so I'm not bringing that forward in this meeting, but what I'm looking for is, I want to commit to bringing that to the next meeting, the next scheduled meeting, and make sure that that information is accurate for you. For this item, I'd like to get some feedback as I'm working on that from the board, maybe some comments from the board on the information that's provided in the Program Manager's Report and ensure that the information and the content that's provided is what you're looking for. Is there, it's useful? Is there additional content that you might be looking to be included in the Program Manager's Report that would be helpful moving forward so that when I prepare it next time, I have all that information included for you? So in lieu of going through the financials as I'm reconciling those, I'd like to get more information or maybe some comments from the board on where you find that information to be useful. Is there a format restructuring that we need to do and get some feedback from you?
All right, thank you. I will open it up for discussion by the Planning Commission to address the, Kim's questions, actually. John.
Yeah, so, Kim, welcome. So, good to have you aboard. I would think, you know, we have certain programs that we allocate funding to, you know, projects and programs, primarily programs. And generally, how this happens is throughout the year, we'll have, you know, one or two Agenda Items that relate to one of the programs and maybe some sort of status update as necessary as progress is being made. I would think just, to me, that's helpful, but also if you just want to highlight a couple of those items and just provide some information on, you know, deliverables or how those are coming together. Usually the deliverables ends up in some sort of report back to the commission, so appreciate that and it's helpful. And then generally, just having, I think just the one sheet that discusses the projects and percent completed and stuff like that is just helpful. It's just a one-sheet form and it gives us a chance to pull something off and have, ask a specific question in regards to that. So those are helpful to me, so I, that's, appreciate that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Flansburgh. Any other comment? Okay, hearing none. This is slated for possible action, but I think at this point, just acceptance of the report is probably the best way to go. So that said, can I have a motion, please?
Move to acceptance.
Got you this time, Mr. Halk. Motion by Mr. Halk. Can I have a second, please?
One second.
Second by Mr. Flansburgh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. That brings us to Agenda Item Number Nine, Discussion Regarding Location and Possible Agenda Items for the Upcoming Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission Meetings and Possible Direction to Staff. Kim.
Thank you, Chairman Martini. Kim Rigdon again for the record, Water Resources Program Manager. So I understand that this is a standing Agenda Item so that we have an opportunity to discuss what the meetings look like moving forward, what kind of topics you want to discuss for the meetings. And I just wanted to let you know that as a new program manager, I appreciate regular meetings. I know that oftentimes we spend some holiday breaks for December and January. As we're moving forward with the Regional Water Management Plan Update looking like it's going to be a January submittal, we also have some priority setting that we need to work on moving forward and I think I need to get a jump on that. So it would be helpful for me to have monthly meetings moving forward, but I understand if the board would want to take December off for the holidays. I think that meeting would be priorities-based discussions rather than the Regional Water Management Plan portion of the meeting. So I just wanted to leave that open for you to decide how you want to move those meetings forward. The other item is making sure that we, if we can't meet in person, that we can do virtual meetings and I kind of wanted to run that by the board and see also what the board's preference is, if you prefer virtual meeting, if that's something that we're allowed to do with this board. So I wanted to throw that out to the board for comment and find out what your preferences are and how you want to proceed as far as looking at priorities on that schedule.
All right, thank you, Kim. I'll bring it back to the Planning Commission for comments, please.
Mr. Chair, perky.
Mr. Drinkwater.
Yeah. My understanding in perky, we have to have inverse meetings unless the governor takes, reissues that executive orders, is that correct? Public meetings have to be in person.
Michael Ponte, you have to have a physical location for the public to attend. You can hold the meeting virtually, but you have to also have a physical location where people can come in and make public comment in a physical location.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
I have one comment.
Danielle, please.
Thank you. I appreciate your report and I think just in terms of going forward and making meetings accessible to everyone, depending on what's going on health-wise, et cetera, I would be in favor of opening the meetings up to a virtual and an in-person option. We've been doing that at our agency for many of our meetings and it seems to work pretty well. We've been calling it a hybrid version, so that's just my two cents. Thank you.
Kim, just a comment from me. I enjoyed being back together as a board. It's nice to see everybody. We don't know where COVID's going, we don't know what's next, so I'm open to either. I think it's nice that, and thank you, Mr. Ponte, for bringing out that we have the option of at least doing either. So my preference right now is to keep meeting here, but if needed, you know, we can do the virtual thing.
Okay.
If I could. So does Washoe County, for these chambers, is it, is a virtual, is a hybrid option an option?
Yeah, we currently do that for many of our boards and commissions that are built similar to this one.
Okay, so that would be, I would find that helpful as well. And then just for city of Reno, we actually have our next, our first meeting in December is the first and we actually have a council meeting that day. So for me, it would be, my recommendation would be that we move to the January 5th, I think it is.
Yeah, I was looking to.
So January 5th would be the next meeting would be my recommendation. That being said, certainly, Kim, I'm available if you wanted to send out some sort of questionnaire to the group or something via email that we could get back to you, whatever would be appropriate. That wouldn't be serial communications and all those other things that would work for council.
Okay. So I can work with Michael on what would be appropriate as far as figuring out what we can do for meeting attendance? Okay.
Yeah, I was going to mention that, I'm sorry you can't make that meeting. I am actually in favor of having a meeting in December to keep things moving along, if that is useful to you, Kim.
to you, Kim.
I would find that very useful.
And if we need to find a date later in the month that keeps the board together, I'm in favor of that. So whichever method you can to pull that together, I'm not sure if we can decide here today, but I'd be open to that, too. But I would like to see us meet in December.
Mr. Chair. Sorry. Mr. Solero. It's all right. No, I would agree. I think a December meeting is important, but I also believe that, you know, every member here needs to be sitting at that desk for the priority setting. So if we can go ahead and throw it out there to see if we can find a date, even if it's a hybrid, so some of us could be, you know, wherever we're at, I think that would be helpful just to keep this program moving, and I do know with budget coming up, we're going to have to set some of those things, so I think it is important to have that December date, whatever that might be.
But, Mr. Solero, if we do a hybrid, how will Mr. Enlow cheat with the dots?
I'm thinking we can get creative without dots this year.
We'll have to try out digital dots.
All right, sorry for that. Any other comments or suggestions for Kim? Okay, do you have what you need?
I think I do.
Okay, I'm going to move on in the agenda then. Go to agenda item number 10. Any comments from the commission today?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Solero.
It's too bad that this is all the way at the end of the agenda with our comments, especially this meeting. As you're all aware, Kim Rigdon is the new program manager to the Western Region Water Commission and thereby this Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission as well. Kim is actually a member, an employee of Washoe County. However, she works directly for the WRWC, and so it's a little weird kind of how these things get put together. So we were able to go through a hiring process similar to what we did with Mr. Wessel at that time, and so Kim is a result of that. And so I wanted to welcome Kim officially as the program manager to this group as well. I know that Kim's probably reached out to each and every one of you. You know, I got Kim all the paperwork, and I said, you know, have at it. You're thrown to the wolves because there's, you know, part of that interlocal agreement is, you know, I'm hands-off as well. So that brings me to thanking Mr. Smitherman as well for continuing to hang on and assist Kim through this transition process. So just wanted to throw those both out there. I think they're doing a great job so far and look forward to more in the future. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Solero. Any other comments from commissioners?
I'll just make a quick comment and second that. Welcome and congratulations on your new position. I'm sure we're all looking forward to working with you. Thanks.
All right, any other comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to staff comments. Kim?
Thank you, Chairman Martini. Kim Rigdon, Water Resources Program Manager. I just wanted to just express my gratitude also for you having faith in me and hiring me, but also Jim has been a tremendous help. I can't imagine walking into this position. Dave said he threw me, you know, into the fire, but I'll tell you what, he set me up with Jim, and Jim has been an invaluable resource in helping me transition, and I have a lot of information coming at me, and I appreciate his help, and I appreciate your patience while I learn and get my feet on the ground. And I also wanted to say that it's Jennifer Perkett's birthday today, so we cannot wish her happy birthday.
Ah, well, happy birthday.
And that's my staff comment.
All right, thank you, Kim. We'll move on to item number 12, public comments. I have a card from Michael DiMartini.
I'm here a little late. The meeting went a little faster than expected. And it had some unforeseen things come up with my printer and other things that caused me to miss agenda item six. And so this, I have a letter and some documents that I prepared for agenda item six and for public comment here at the end of the meeting because, relevant to the plan that's being worked on. And as I understand, the plan is still not finalized at this point, so it would be appropriate still to submit this letter and these documents for the record, most of which are already of record. In the interest of time, I don't think it's necessary to read the letter unless somebody would like me to, but essentially, it's a report from Meridian Company regarding the North Valleys, and it has, among other things, some maps attached, and it has some information regarding the recent drainage event, which essentially was kind of interesting because we had some record rainfalls, at least in areas out in the North Valleys. And my company and staff has been studying the North Valleys for decades, and myself have been studying it for almost a half a century, actually a half a century. Now, anyway, this storm was interesting. It was a rare event, the only one that ever occurred in October of this magnitude, and it produced almost no flooding off of the natural undisturbed areas. It was very interesting. Yet, at the same time, there was large flooding off of, and amounts of water up of the disturbed areas. And some of my measurements are showing it may be even larger than previously expected. So that's just a subset of this information. I'd like to just turn this in to the chairperson or to Jennifer for the record. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. DiMartini. Is anyone else in the public wishing to make comment at this time? All right, seeing none, we are adjourned.